Okay, let's see who's there.
You don't have to worry with me. My buddy's here. The meeting's violation.
So what I want you to do is I want them to see everybody that's talking.
Fifty-five.
I want them to see you, to see everybody that's talking. And I want you to make sure to chat.
Yep. And what?
No chat.
So I'll just turn it around, let them see.
And they, they, they can write questions that you're really thinking.
Yeah, yeah, whatever you want to do. Yeah, I'll just turn this around. So everybody sees it, but like, no one's gonna, yeah, you might want to make note that I'm just facing this there. So these people that can't come here. Yeah, but they can't talk. I mean, until later, whatever, if I come back to this. Are they on mute? Yeah, they're all on mute. I think they're all on mute. Yep, except for you. Yeah, I think so. No, that's, we got, we got all this.
Got us all.
They are on the station.
Morning.
Get up. Ready to start?
Yes.
Good morning to everyone. Good morning to the people on Zoom. We're trying to find a better way for you at this time, so please bear with us. So I'm gonna call this meeting to order at eight twelve AM. What we have today is urgent business and we're gonna have a discussion and possible vote for the annual meeting. Um, let's see, where do we begin from here? So should we have him speak first? Yeah, just turn it on. At this time, we don't have our attorney, the Tom Dickinson, speaking for us. Concerning what is going on in the fire district right now.
Good morning. So effective as of this, as of a couple of days ago, we have settled the voting lawsuit. As folks are probably aware, a few months ago, the Superior Court issued a decision announcing or saying that the, the denial of voting rights to non-taxpaying residents violates the Constitution, violates Rhode Island law and the US Constitution. And so in order to comply with that decision, we've worked out an agreement with the plaintiffs in the case, which, which is in accordance with the judge's decision and will put into effect what the judge decided. And that would involve allowing anyone who resides in the fire district for 30 days before the annual meeting is permitted to vote at the annual meeting, regardless whether they own property in the district. And that's consistent with the judge's decision. In addition, we've entered into an agreement to provide for the creation of a five-member Charter Review Commission, which will take a look at the charter and the bylaws and see what needs to be adjusted in order to accord not only with the part of the judge's decision I just described about the 30-day residence voting, but also the question about whether non-residents should be permitted to vote, uh, which is, was another issue in the lawsuit, which the judge did not finally resolve, but which she gave us a pretty good indication of what the law will be on that. So, uh, that Charter Review Commission is going to be appointed by the council. It will include one of the people who was a plaintiff and everybody will be appointed by the council. And they will begin working right away on reviewing the charter and the bylaws to see what need to be changed in order to bring them in line with the judge's decision. Uh, and when that committee's work is done, under the charter, any amendment to the charter has to be approved first by the General Assembly and then by the voters in the district at an annual or special meeting. So those revisions that are, that are prepared by the Charter Review Commission or Committee will have to go first to the General Assembly and be passed there and then come back to the district uh, to be voted on at a meeting here, an annual or special meeting here. Now, what happens as a result of the judge's decision is that the way the annual meeting has been conducted in the past is, is no longer going to work because of these additional individuals who have a right to vote and have to be registered with, you know, for the 30 days in order, in order to cast their right of vote, right to vote. And because we are now, I guess, fewer than 30 days away, or certainly well within, you know, a very short time period from what your, when your annual meeting would be, which is, what, the fourth Thursday of, uh, the last Thursday in June, the last Thursday in June. There really is no practical way to have all of this mechanism in place in time for the annual meeting that on the, on the last Thursday in June. For one thing, I've been telling you about the settlement terms. Uh, we don't, the judge hasn't finally signed off on this yet. We expect that she will within the next few weeks, but we can't really start work on it until she actually, you know, puts her signature on it. And, uh, that hasn't happened yet, although I, I think it will happen within the next week or 10 days. Uh, but again, from that point, there's really not enough time to have the annual be organized by the last Thursday in June. So looking at the bylaws, the bylaws provide that if the annual meeting cannot be conducted at any time for any cause, any and all business which might have been transacted at the meeting, at that meeting, may be transacted at the next succeeding meeting, whether special or annual. That's Article One, Section One of the bylaws. So if, because of the circumstance that the district is in with this lawsuit and the change in the voting eligibility, if you can't conduct the annual meeting on the last Thursday of June of this year, then you can, you can conduct that business under the bylaws at, at the next annual meeting or at a special meeting, if, if the decision is made to convene a special meeting. So I just wanted to lay that out, you know, where we are in terms of the settlement, uh, the judgment likely to be signed off on very shortly, and then the implications that has for holding your annual meeting.
Okay, thank you. And again, that was our attorney and the fire district, Tom Dickinson. At this point, I want my team to go through the council one at a time with questions, comments, or concerns. Now, our Zoom is pretty much unmanned this time, so if you have questions, write the questions down and we'll come back over to the computer and we'll look at them. So at this point, well, we're gonna start with Steve. At this point, why don't we start to my far right, which is Carolyn. Do you have any questions?
No, I have no questions. But I read the entire, um, judgment and it is quite extensive and people should avail themselves of it. It's a public document. But clearly there are a lot of pieces to put in place to effectively run an election that will not be questioned and will hold up in a court of law. And I personally don't want to see us rush through to something and then have issues and problems and start all over again. So I would like to, um, suggest that we postpone the meeting and allow us the time to do it right.
Yes. That being said, Tom, are there additional steps that Carolyn's referred to that we need to take now to be able to hold a legal, uh, election for the, for the fire district? If so, what are they?
Well, I'm sorry.
That's it.
Okay. Well, you're going to have to have in place a mechanism for allowing these 30-day residents, you know, people who've been here for 30 days before the meeting to register to vote. Uh, you can't just rely on the tax rules anymore, which is what, you know, typically has been done because non-residents, I mean, sorry, non-property owners are going to be permitted to vote. Uh, so I would say that's, that's going to be the most significant step uh, that you'd have to take. I don't know if that answers. But the, the other thing you may want to consider, and I know, you know, some council members may have been thinking about this is, you know, in the past, you've never had the assistance of either the Secretary of State or the Board of Elections in managing your, your, your elections. And those are resources that every municipality, you know, every, every entity in the state really has, has helped from. And you may want to get that process underway, uh, so that, you know, the management of it is something that's done with guidance from state officials.
Secretary of State and who?
Board of, Board of Elections.
Okay, and that was Anthony, the councilman. I'm gonna move down Bill, which is on your, the mic, please.
Hello. I agree 100% now, I think. Um, we should have an annual meeting this year. I think it's extremely important to get it right. Uh, it's a huge turning point for the Bonnet Shores Fire District. And I agree with the attorney. I think we should get the board of elections involved. I think we should get the Secretary of State's office involved. They're the professionals. They know how to run an election and, um, and it's time to, um, you know, professionalize the way the fire district votes.
Okay, thank you. Steve?
Yeah, I agree with everyone. It's, yeah, it's, it's still be professional, like, pick on Bill, but, you know, just improve the process, you know, to be more professional. Um, you see how the executive sessions, how long they go, and that's just on small points, whatever. So you can imagine what, you gotta, I think everybody out there has to appreciate the, uh, the, uh, involvement in this process for voting, you know, just gotta bear with us, you know, we want it done right. No, boy, didn't it? Promised. Excellent.
Okay, Molly, vice chair.
I will piggyback on everyone else. Um, I think we have to be particular in who we pick for this commission or committee that we're going to put together. Um, I know it has to be one person that was a plaintiff and the rest we get to select. I'm not sure if it should just be one chair or one council member. Does it have to have a council member or it could be just any?
That's up to, that's up to, according to the judgment, assuming the judge approves, that that's going to be up to the council. So it could be all council members plus that plaintiff. It could be one, you know, whatever. It's five members.
Okay, all right. So I'm just gonna, it should be a mixture of people from the neighborhood and council and a plaintiff. At what point can we share all of the information once it's signed?
Yes.
Okay, so anything and everything that we discussed at our executive meeting will be then be public.
We should talk about that, but I would think mo- almost everything.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Molly. Well, basically, I think the council has already spoken. I, I agree with the council. We need to do this right, moving forward, complying with the laws. And we need to, um, get this community together, whether some of us agree with this and some of us don't. We need to move forward, follow the law, and hopefully unite this fire district once again. So at that point, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we postpone the annual meeting.
Maybe I have another question.
Okay. Okay, hold on.
Cause I, I.
Wait, hold on one minute.
You, you wanted to question?
Um, let me look over there. Hold on one minute. Well, actually, Anthony, you speak and I'll go look at.
Okay. So. I, I, I just listened to everybody, counsel. I, I think we're, we're combining two different issues. One of them is what needs to happen now in addition to be able to facilitate the election for the change? And then two, it seems like, let's take this as an opportunity to just peel back the whole process and, and revamp it, right? Cause there's, there's room for improvement. Those are two separate items. I think we have a duty to put on the annual meeting. And if we were gonna do that, we need to incorporate what needs to change, what needs to change, what needs to happen, changes. So that's why my first question was, what are the steps to be able to have the annual meeting and accommodate the new changes? And I, I just, I don't know, I don't think we have enough clarity on what that is and how much time it takes. So is it a delayed election or is it gonna be? Let's wait another full year for, for an election?
I think that's up to the council. I mean, if you think you can get everything done, get the charter, get the charter changes in place and, and get, uh, you know, have a process in place to register this new category of voters and get them, you know, lined up to vote at the annual meeting as quickly as you think you can get that done, remembering that it's gotta go to the General Assembly. And the General Assembly is, I mean, we're in the end of May. So we know they're generally done, if not by the beginning of July, by the middle of July. So you're probably not going to get a vote in the General Assembly on whatever it is you propose until, uh, until sometime next spring, but who knows? You never know. Things could happen more quickly.
So maybe, maybe that's the answer. So you say that would need to be signed. We need to go through the General Assembly, sign before we could actually hold a meeting?
Well, the, the problem, you could hold a meeting without the General Assembly having approved it, but you'd be holding it with sort of a hybrid, what your current charter is, plus these extra voters. And, and that's possible you could do that, uh, but you need to, you do need to have the time to incorporate these extra voters. So.
Okay, so with that, with that said, basically, my, my thoughts it would be virtually impossible for us to even get a commission together that we couldn't even have a meeting 30 days. I think that would almost be impossible for us to be able to do that and run our regular business here is to get a commission together and actually let the people speak. I don't think 30 days is enough for that. It's impossible. That's impossible.
Well, it's hard, it's hard enough to do a regular.
And in the commission.
It got dropped in our lap, it got dropped in our lap last year. And it takes a village. I mean, it's been some, many, some amount of work. Now we're gonna add this extra step. Having people check in on our regular meeting is very, very difficult because there's trusts and all of those kinds of things. You don't know who is, you, you have to make sure that that's all proper. Now you have to make sure the person's been registered or, you know, lived here for 30 days prior to this meeting. So now it is 21st of May and our meeting would be June, whatever. So it just makes it more difficult.
Or postponed.
Thank you. Well, then Anthony, do you have more comments?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, or postponed. And what you just said, I agree. It's, it's, it's a lot, but we do have a current process in place. While it's just the incorporation of this change, how do we accommodate the 30-day residents and how do we, we'll have to figure out whether it's now, whether it's in a year, but we'll have to figure out how we, um, you know, get that inventory of voters and check them and all that stuff, just like we've done for uh, everyone else in the other elections. And how long does that take? I, I don't know. Couple of weeks? A few months? I, I, I just want to make sure that we go through, that's all.
Hold on, Bill?
I, I, I think the biggest thing here is the General Assembly. Um, you have to get it to them first and they have to be, you know, convened, they have to be there. I mean, you're not, we're not the top, then we're not their priority, you know, and then you gotta get it through the General Assembly. So, you know, they're gonna be gone in another month and they're not gonna reconvene again until January.
It's usually the beginning of January. Occasionally they'll have, they'll come back for one reason or another, but it's usually, you know.
Yeah, it's, it's almost impossible, not only with our logistics, but with the state of Rhode Island.
Yeah, but.
Also, we have time, we also have time and we'd like to get in touch with the Secretary of State's office. We'd like to get in touch with, um, the Board of Elections. So there's a lot of parts and things that need to be put into place. So.
So the Board of Elections, that falls in the bucket of just revamping the entire voting, uh, voting process and annual meeting process. That's what I was saying, that's, that's a separate bucket. Uh, as far as the General Assembly, I thought Tom said that that's not necessarily a requirement to hold the, the annual meeting. Right? I mean, you don't, you can hold the annual meeting instead of be a hybrid.
Right. I, I think I, I would, that's what I would say. Yes, I would say.
Is there risk to that?
There is.
Oh, then that's.
The risk, because, well, without getting too deeply into it, but the risk is that we, we still have open questions about other things in the judge's decision that will be worked through in the charter revision, but have not been worked through yet.
Okay, with that said, I do not believe that, oh.
This just made a noise here.
Are you sure that wasn't me?
Oh, maybe it was.
That's me. No, nobody was.
I don't, I don't see hands.
With that said, I would say that we need to be educated from the Board of Elections. We need to know exactly what we're doing. We don't want to hold an election and then we faltered on something and now we have another issue, which could end up with an invalid election. It could end up with money spent that we don't need to spend twice. So does any of ladies have any comments? If you would, hold on. Come up, come up, come up, come up. Because.
I will address and brush my teeth.
So if you would say your name, your address.
All right, Deborah Pannablow, 84 Pink Philip Road. I have a question. On the 30-day residency, just hearing this, I'm thinking we're in a very, uh, different type of community where people frequently come in and out. So if I'm a college student renting a house, this is my legal residency and I meet the 30-day requirement because of the timing. I'm still here, let's say, this is the election or the town meeting is usually what, the end of June. Is there any, any discussion about how that 30-day applies to an environment like the one we're living in?
Well, I'm not sure how much discussion there was when they drafted the Rhode Island Constitution. That's where that language comes from. And I, I think it's everybody's expectation. Well, I, I think we're bound by it. And the language is very precise. It says 30 days prior to the voting, prior to the day of the voting. You have to have resided in the dis, in, in the place where you're voting.
But not a day after.
Well,
I'm just, I'm in the charting, so I look at things a little bit.
Yeah, I mean.
From different sides.
The answer to the question is if you're registered 30 days before, you can vote in the, in the place where you're registered.
Okay.
And, you know, if somebody picks up and moves on, you know, the day before the election, uh, uh, you know, maybe someone could contest that vote, but I don't think that's likely to happen. And I think if you're going to have the beating, you know, you, if you're going to have the meeting on the, on the, uh, the fourth, whatever it is, the fourth Thursday in June, then you go back 30 days from that. And if that creates some sort of a seasonal question, that's something the Charter Review Panel could look at.
That would be the only question. I, I mean, I have no feeling, um, one, I mean, the residents vote, that's great, but we live in a community where you get not, you don't normally move into a community for nine months a year. You don't normally move in and out of it as frequently as our community is. And so if you can prove residency, which you can, then you're gonna vote.
Right. And this comes up, I mean, this is a big issue in, say, Amherst, Massachusetts, where, uh, students at UMass are, are, may register and vote in Amherst, even though, you know, they don't really live there. Uh, and it comes up in Cranston because they're, let's say, temporary residents of Cranston as guests of the state, if you know what I mean.
I do.
Uh, and they, they are eligible, they are counted as, you know, as, as in the population of Cranston. So, um, will there, you know, is there a guarantee that there won't be a few people who, you know, maybe you could question? No, there's no guarantee of that. But we go by what the Constitution says.
Okay. And I ask, just, just a follow-up. Um, taxpayer and non-residents. You said that was still left open by the judge.
Right.
Is there going to be a decision on that when the final decision was written and handed down?
That's going, we're resolving the case. The judge is out of the picture.
Okay.
Will be. One, you know, once, once we have this judgment in place, the resolution of that, that issue is the creation of this Charter Review. And that will be worked through in that process. They will be guided by what, by the things that the judge said about pluses and negatives of permitting non-resident taxpayers to vote, how that may create, you know, issues. However, um, it will be, the Charter Review Panel will come up with, you know, what they come up with through their deliberations. It will go to the General Assembly. The General Assembly will come up with, you know, will, will look at it and rule on it or, you know, vote on it. And then it will come back to the voters here. So that process was put in place in order to have a forum to address all those things in multiple forums, really. Charter Review, the General Assembly, and then the voters here.
Okay, and so then my last category of people is the beach club. I'm a taxpayer, non-resident. Will that be addressed as well by this subcommittee?
The eligibility of anyone to vote will be addressed by that.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, I do have one question here from someone on Zoom. Richard, this would be to you, Tom. How do you avoid the risk that this council has the authority to complete this lawsuit, given that the election was by non-voters?
Do you see the difference?
Oh, Richard, first, first, I will. Richard, go ahead and move on then. He wants to know. Okay, for Tom. How do you avoid the risk that this council has the authority to complete this lawsuit, given that the election was by non-voters? Maybe he doesn't understand that everyone still can vote.
Yeah, I, I, you mean, I think he means the council was elected at the last annual meeting. I think that's what he means. Um, I, I don't, if, if that's what he means, the answer to the question is, one of the arguments in the lawsuit was that one, one of the arguments that they made was that, or one of the forms of relief that they asked for was that the council should, should be deemed not a properly elected council, but temporary trustees until such time as a properly elected council is chosen. That went nowhere. So from that, I think we conclude that, that, you know, that there was nothing, the judge never said that that was, that was a valid argument. The plaintiffs had given up that argument in resolving the lawsuit. So, uh, I, I don't think there can be any challenge to the, the, uh, qualifications of the sitting council at this point.
Um, I, I haven't seen anything back for the questions. Nancy, yes, just hold the mic.
Nancy Cordy, 240 Monique Road. I kind of got some of my questions answered when Deb was up. So the scenario where all this gets done, commission, council goes to a vote. Who gets to vote at that?
At that annual meeting, whoever is eligible to vote after this judgment comes in place. Because any changes that the Charter Commission is going to propose that are approved by the General Assembly will not be effective under, under the existing charter, will not be effective until they're approved by an annual or special meeting.
So everyone who voted was able to vote at the last meeting? This, the provision of the.
30-day resident.
30-day resident is going to be able to vote on this new chart.
That's the current landscape. That's right.
Okay, do you have any questions? Okay, Steve, can you see if there are any questions on that Zoom that's been written in?
Yeah, I don't see anything. I don't see any hands. I'm looking for messages. I don't see anything.
Okay.
There's not a small crowd anyway. It's only like five people.
All right, so at this point, I think the council fully understands in the state of time for any kind of election until we have some input from legal counsel as well as changing our charter. So do I have a motion?
I made a motion that we postpone the election until such time as we have received the appropriate approvals uh, from the judge and the General Assembly. Yeah, so and then it can go back to the voters. That makes sense to me.
You mean the annual meeting? You mean the meeting?
A meeting. I mean, it could be a special meeting.
Right, right. The, the annual or special meeting.
Right.
I think that's what you meant.
I, I, no, I.
Well, second and first.
So are we saying the annual meeting, which we would have this June, were.
So are we saying the annual meeting, which we would have this June, we're moving that to next June? We're skipping.
Well, well. We're postponing it until such time as we have the commission.
Well, it makes a big difference.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. We're, until the commission has completed it, it has gone to the assembly, uh, and signed by the judge and then gone to the, um, the commission. So it's, I got it backwards.
I know, I, I understand what those steps are.
After those steps are completed, we could call a special election.
So the special election would be for the vote in regards to the voting.
Of the changes.
Okay, so then we have that. Then when would be the annual meeting? My question for the annual meeting is, there's very different things that happen in here from January to February to March to April to when people live here and don't live here. So I just think we have to keep that in mind as well because there are people that come back or live here for the summer and whatever. So I just want to.
Well, then we could, I could modify that and say that we would postpone it to the next annual meeting.
Okay, I would, I would actually, um, agree with Molly with that.
Yeah.
Because if we hold too many meetings or we hold any kind of a special meeting in the winter, it's not, it's not good for all of our residents.
Right.
All of our residents. I would, I would personally say that we should amend your motion, Carol, if you would like, and just put the annual meeting to next year for our third week in June so that it's consistent with everything that we do. Of course, barring that we have.
I don't think we have.
Barring that we have all of our legal matters taken care of.
Yeah, um, I think also we can amend, I can amend it so that we would postpone it to the next annual meeting, but it does not necessarily have to be the same time as we currently vote it. Because that could be part of the Charter Revision.
Okay, we have to, I would, I would think that we have to get something precise, otherwise it looks like it's all left up in the air. Well, I would say that we should.
If, if, if I may, if you say the next annual meeting, then that.
That's it.
That does it, right?
Yeah.
As it currently is, that would be the fourth, whatever, the last Thursday in June. You might change that along the way, but that would just leave it, leave it what's in place now, which is the last Thursday in June.
Okay, so, hold on a second. Nancy.
Nancy Cordy, um, so are you saying that you would put the vote for the new changes and the annual meeting, which would also be an meeting to elect new officials? Would, that's a huge meeting.
I think that, no, I think you have a special meeting in regards to the commission and the way we're going to vote. And then we have our annual meeting. Because how do you have voting on the commission and making it so it all works within the?
Right, because then your people who are able to run for office will look different if they're not able to vote.
Correct.
So if you're, if you're.
Won't be at that time, won't be at that time. The way I understand it is everyone can vote at the next annual meeting on charter changes. Whenever, whenever we have any meeting, it's going to change the chart, every eligible voter can vote.
Right, but wouldn't that be better as a special meeting? And then you've got all that squared away and then you have the annual meeting. Because it's changing, it may change who can vote in line for office. And I would like to, um, ask you to consider, um, when the charter is being changed, that the annual meeting change, maybe by a couple of weeks to July. I don't know what your, um, so if you're a snowbird and you're a resident here, but you're not on the deed and you don't come back until June 1st, is that an issue?
Well, it, it's 30 days. So, so, so I, I would expect that one of the things the Charter Commission would consider would be, does it make more sense to have that meeting, you know, sometime in the middle or end of July or even, or, you know, whatever, some, some of it, some later time for convenience of, of residents here, of summer residents.
So in your opinion, so in your opinion, we should have a special meeting to vote for that, for the charter information and then have our annual meeting? Or do you think it should be one huge crazy mess?
Well, I'm, I'm generally in favor of huge crazy messes because, because that's how lawyers make their money. But, but, uh, I, I mean, th- there certainly is logic in saying, you know, let's work out the charter, get that all done, and then have the elections. You know, at a ti- at a time after.
Because my only concern with the, the charter is our snowbirds. So say our snowbirds are away January, February, March, and we decided to have a vote in March.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that, well, that would have to be a conversation, which we already, like, it's not behind the scenes, discuss that as mail and ballot, and then that changes everything. Because a mail and ballot means you can't run for.
Well, well.
That gets into a totally.
Well.
Then you have a special.
Right, right.
Or, or you have a special meeting in June, push the annual meeting out to August. You know, you get two months' time to work through the detail.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, we have to, but those are the things we have.
Well, that was just a.
Snowbirds, snowbirds are a big part of our neighborhood and I'm going to be one of them. So it's, it, it, it is a big deal.
Yeah, and I'd say it's not, I, but I think June to August would, uh, I think would solution for both of them.
Okay.
Thank you, Tom, comments?
Yeah, I just think, remember, your, when you have the meeting to vote on the charter is going to depend on, on the General Assembly largely, right? And whether or not you can conduct that, whether, whether or not you could conduct the vote on that by mail. Um, you know, that'd be something to maybe address with the Secretary of State as you're trying to bring her office or that office into the process.
Alright, so I have one more question or a comment that was previously asked. So Richard asks again, how do you, Richard Bernstein, how do you avoid the risk that this council has the authority to complete the lawsuit? And he states that, um, he doesn't agree with you and to ask you to fight the point of the decision in what page you refer him to.
I don't know.
I don't know, so his original question is how do you avoid the risk that this council has the authority to complete the lawsuit, given that the election was by non-voters?
Well, there's, there's been no challenge. Once this lawsuit is resolved, there's no pending challenge to the election of this council, the sitting council. And there's going to be a judgment from the judge that disposes of all of the issues in that case.
Um, I, I think what he's saying is, or the question he's asking is, how do we have the authority to settle that case? Even though, once it's settled, we have the authority. How do we have the authority ahead of time? I think that's what he's asking.
Well, I mean, you're the defendants in the case. That's how you have been thrown at this level.
Okay, alright, so why don't we clean up the motion, Carolyn. Carolyn, hold on, one second. I'm gonna give you the mic so that everybody can hear, and then clean it up and then we can move forward.
Okay, so I make a motion that we postpone the annual meeting to comply with the judge's order, the assembly's approval, and until such time as we can put in place the 30 day resident rule in order to allow voting to take place. The timeframe is going to be fluid based on what happens. We don't know that. And, and we want to make sure it's convenient for the entire community.
Okay, with that said, do I have a second for that?
I'll second.
Motion was made by Carolyn, is second by Bill. We'll have a roll call, Steve.
I agree with that.
Bill.
I agree.
Molly.
Aye.
Carolyn.
Aye.
Anthony. Myself, aye, for the motion carries. Okay, at that point, I move for adjournment of this meeting. The motion for adjourn, Molly.
I'll motion for adjourn.
Three seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you, Carolyn.
Well, because they don't participate. Well, let's cut that off, Steve.
Thanks, Tom.
You're welcome.